Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, August 13, 2024. This proceeding is being broadcast on Channel 35, and the exact broadcast times can be found by contacting Channel 35. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please stay present. Commissioner Marie Katz, Commissioner Lehrer.
Present.
President Katz.
Present.
Vice President McGraw.
Present.
Commissioner Pinder.
Present, thank you.
For board members, a quorum is present. Mr. President?
Thank you, Shante. Welcome, everybody, to this meeting of the DWP Board of Commissioners. We extend our best wishes to our colleague, Marie Katz, for a speedy recovery. I've been visited by the COVID bug, which is going around again and again and again. But I know she's probably listening and taking detailed notes, so be careful, everyone. But with that, any comments by other commissioners?
No, I missed the last meeting, and I apologize for that. I hope I have caught up, and I'm really excited about all the young, fresh faces in the audience. I know our president will have more to say about that.
That's what you said a minute ago. The commissioner is correct. It's good to see everyone's child with them today, bring a child to work. Hopefully, this will encourage them, not discourage them, from coming to work for the city of Los Angeles and the Department of Water and Power and the people who keep the lights out and the water running. So you're all welcome, and I hope you enjoy the meeting. Feel free to contribute whenever you want. It can only improve our debate. So with that, we will start. Public comment?
Public comment is now open at this time. We have two public commentators. The first is Ashok Talugdar. Please be mindful, you'll have two minutes to speak.
Pardon me. Tall podiums and I have long unresolved issues.
The mic moved, so.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ashok Talugdar. I'm Deputy General Counsel at AIDS Healthcare Foundation. I'm here again to seek your support and also a shout out to your wonderful customer design, customer station design team for helping us out. Principally, our problem is the following. We have, we are in, we're owners and operators of 14 old SRO housing units, buildings, and they have old power. They are not designed for the conveniences of modern electronic life. And so these buildings are failing in terms of their power load. So we are trying to figure out how to do new power and populate these buildings. Some of these buildings are lying vacant because of, because they don't have sufficient power. The challenge, of course, is that new power means a new customer station design, which means new equipment with a lead time of a year, close to a year, sometimes more. I understand that that's not either under your control or my control. But what I think is under your control is coming up with solutions for short-term power that can tide us over so that you don't have 150 vacant units sitting there for lack of power when there are 150 homeless people probably going, who are going to die on the street. So that is my request, my continuing request. And I'm going to, sorry, but I'm going to be a thorn in your side until we get motion on this. But I also do want to shout out and thank you for all the support you have given to us so far. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bruce Resnick. The next speaker is Bruce Resnick.
Mark.
Mark.
I've got it. You're going to talk after we have the presentation. We're going to group them, those folks together after the presentation.
Okay. There were six ecomments. All were distributed to Commissioners. Public comment is now closed at this time.
All right. Janice, you're up.
I'm up. Well, good morning, President Katz and Commissioners in public press. Just want to say a couple of things. One, I want to reiterate the fact that we're in summer. The heat is coming. It's been here, and I want to really highlight the performance of our power crews and our teams. Even though we've experienced severe temperatures in L.A., we have managed our power outages to very low levels compared to other utilities in the country. So kudos to you guys in power and operations to keep our customers abreast of outages and fast repairs. And also to our customer, our service organization for providing programs like Cool L.A. that allow our customers to enjoy our rebates to ensure that we get programs to support the reduction of heat in their houses. We also have our third town hall this Thursday, August 15. These are meetings that we create with the whole workforce to share programs and initiatives we're doing across the department. There's a lot of great work happening in the department every day. And so this, this Thursday, we're going to talk about two important things for me. One is our safety management system, which is a critical component to our safety culture. And number two is our inter-mountain power project called Renewed, which is, President Katz and I had the opportunity to visit recently, our first generator that's going to be able to take on hydrogen as the fuel. So, and we're expected to be in operation in 2025. It's the first in the nation that I'm aware of, and we continue to make huge progress on our clean energy transition. I also was able to join the International Olympic Committee last week in Paris to prepare for the Olympics. As many of you were following, we just received the, the flag, the Olympic flag for the city of L.A. We have the honor and pride to be the host of the 2028 Olympic Games. And as part of receiving utility, we were able to talk to the French utility and get lesson learns, things to do, things not to do, things to avoid, and ensure that we understand the needs and requirements of the system to host games of this magnitude. It was an amazing experience. And when you look behind the scenes of the Olympic Games, what you see on TV, what goes behind the scenes is 10 times bigger. And so it's a great eye-opening, but a lot of motivation for our team to get going. We're, we were on that trip also with Salcar Edison, one of our partners, who has a lot of venues in L.A. that are going to be part of the venues for the Olympic Games in '28. So it's a collaboration with a lot of organizations. And as many of you saw, Mayor declared no car Olympics. So a lot of electric transportation infrastructure upgrades are going to be happening in the city of L.A. I'm also really excited to announce that LADWP scored the highest in 2024 for J.D. Power Sustainability Index in the nation. So we were tied with SMUD. We raised 10 levels in the scoring, but this highlights the amount of awareness, the belief of our, the people of L.A. that we're going to get the clean energy transition done and that they're active participants in that transition. That's not an easy score to achieve, and it's a huge undertaking for us to change the mindsets of our communities. So I'm really excited about that. And lastly, but not last, is today is a really exciting day at LADWP. You can feel the energy in the building. It's Bring Your Child to Work Day. A lot of young people here looking at their parents and what they're doing, their uncles, their aunties, their grandparents. And I think it's a day where we get to share what we do, why we go to work every day, and how we make the city of L.A. vibrant because of the work that this department does. So I want to welcome all the kids, and I'm going to also invite Helen to speak about this day today. She's here with her two kids.
Could we clap while she comes up?
Hello, good morning, honorable Commissioners and executives. So my name is Helen Olivares, and I'm a Managing Water Utility Engineer in the Water System Water Operations Division. And I'm so extremely thrilled to be part of this special day. And I'm especially excited to introduce my two wonderful children, Noah, who's 13, and Noel, who is seven. They've always been curious what I do at work and sometimes the long hours that I put in. So today is a really great opportunity for them to see what I do firsthand. And as an engineer, I get to contribute to projects and programs that keep our wonderful city running. As a parent, days like this remind me of the importance of balancing work with family. And it's really fantastic to see the, so many young faces here today, learning about the incredible work that we do. And hopefully, our kids are inspired to be a part of the LADWP family when they grow up. Also, I wanted to give a big thank you to the team who planned today's amazing event. So thank you for making this a very memorable, memorable experience for our children.
Well, thank you for bringing your cute, beautiful children today, and also thank all of the kids for sharing your parents with us during the week. So we all here and all the great people at DWP can keep the water running and the lights on. So without your parents, that wouldn't happen. So thank you very much for your sacrifice as well. What else to add? Any other commissioners' comments? Janice, I heard the mayor also talking about 3,000 buses again.
I know. I know, we're, we're working on that right now.
I know.
Well, I, I also brought my son to work today. So if he's in the audience, you can say hi.
I want to ask the important question, is he a budding engineer?
I, I told him they were going to ask him, and he had to answer why he doesn't want to be an engineer.
We'll do that off mic. All right. Moving down on the agenda. Dr. Pickle, you're up. Great payer advocate.
We support items, in particular, items five, six, nine, and 15. Especially item five, because one of our major projects over the last dozen years has been to look at benchmarking and what the needs are for DWP and where they need to improve. And then there's progress been made in these areas, and this should help effectuate more of that progress. The, and then we may have comments on these individually if questions arise, and also on the management presentations and the items that spring from those management presentations, which are items 10 through 12 and 18.
Come back to you when we bring up those individual items. By the way, one thing I was going to say on Janice's report, aside from it's always great being number one, particularly on something that's new and is a real benchmark for utilities around the country. But to jump 10 places to number one is very impressive and a great tribute to the men and women of LADWP. And so I want to thank all of them for making that possible. And also thank IBEW for working with us on that and making it possible. But it's something we're all very proud of, and for good reason, so.
From where we were in the late teens, it's an amazing step forward.
We were in the negative column, I think, in the late teens.
We were redefining negative.
No, you're right. No, it's, it's a huge, it's a huge, it's a huge, I mean, it gives new meaning to see change in the department in particular. So thank everybody who is part of that, and we will keep going. Okay. Item G on the agenda.
Deferring items in 13, in 14, in 16, in 17. Calling for a vote for items 1 through 12, 15, and 18 through 20. Sure. Deferral or items for approval?
Both.
Okay. Deferring items in 13, in 14, in 16, in 17. Requesting a vote for items in 1 through in 12, in 15, and in 18 through in 20.
So moved.
And real quick, do we have a recusal on 10?
Okay.
Who's recused?
I'm Commissioner Pinder for number 10.
Okay.
So then I move to approve items 1 through 9, 11 and 12, and items 15, 18, 19, and 20.
Second by Ms. Pinder?
No, I'm recused.
She's recused. Second by Mia?
Yes.
Ms. Lehrer?
Yes. Second.
Without objection, all members present except for Ms. Pinder on the one item being recorded as an I vote.
I think we have to, my understanding is that I, I did everything but her item, and we'll do that one specially because she has to leave the room.
Put your head on your desk, please. Kids will understand that one. But, all right, you're up again.
Okay, this time, a vote to approve both item 10.
Okay. Motion and second by Ms. Lehrer. Without objection, all of us present, I votes, that'll, that'll pass. You can come back now. Thank you. Well done. Management report.
First presentation is going to be on Fiber Optics Enterprise and Fiber Expansion Strategy for Power Systems Distribution Automation and Communication Division, Samson Haley. Zanita Meik and Rajan Montero will be presenting.
Great, thank you. Grab a chair. Make yourself comfortable. Who wants to start?
All right. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, good morning.
Oh, good morning. I'm, I'm way ahead already.
That's all right. We already did it. It was all good.
Everything was approved, then we can just.
Just turn the mic up slightly.
Okay. Okay. My name is Samson Haley, Power Engineering Manager in the Communication Infrastructure Engineering Division. It's under Power Distribution Automation and Communications Department, Division. The group is primarily responsible for maintaining, installing, and supporting the department's telecommunications infrastructure. That includes cable, fiber optics, and wireless communications as well. There are two groups in this, two subgroups. One is the Fiber Optics Enterprise, F.O.E. We're presenting on behalf of Fiber Optics today. And we have also Wireless and Cable Transport Group. Genita, she is here with me. She is the supervisor for the Fiber Optics Enterprise. And today, we'll be presenting about the fiber optics infrastructure, our mission, and kind of general overview of the fiber system, our commercial fiber business, fiber optics leasing business, and our plan for the future. So a little background about Fiber Optics Enterprise, F.O.E. F.O.E. is a section of the, actually, it says Advanced Technologies Infrastructure Division, but it has been organized into Power Distribution Automation and Communications Group now. It was established in the 1990s basically to replace copper with fiber and build out our data transport system. But we do have engineering, drafting, administrative, and field personnel to support the business. So in a nutshell, what we do is we use the utility assets and right-of-ways to provide data transport services for, primarily for the Department of Water and Power. So like I said earlier, our primary mission is to provide data transport services for the services that the DWP provides. This includes corporate, SCADA, connectivity to power, water, and joint facilities, connectivity to our data centers, security services, substation automation, and several other core functions. In addition, you know, we do support major department initiatives like the Distribution Automation Project, which we are working on now, DMS or Distributed Energy Management Resources Project, EV charging station, grid modernization, and several other major department initiatives. As a secondary mission, we do provide fiber lease services to other entities. You can see the snapshot of some of the companies that we provide services. But again, our core mission is provide data services. But when we install fiber optics, we usually install excess capacity first to be ready for, for now and the future as well. And there are several city and department initiatives. So we make sure that we have extra or excess capacity to support the future. And also, because of that, you know, what we do is we make unused fiber available for other entities. This includes City of Los Angeles entities, ITA businesses, universities, hospitals, and several other businesses in the City of Los Angeles. By doing that, first and foremost, it reduces the cost for, the cost of running the entire Department of Fiber Optics infrastructure, basically.
What percent of the system do you make available for, outside the primary mission?
It's a very small, small percentage. Less than 10%. So, but again, primarily, we, we do keep for our core businesses, future plants, spares, and other things as well. As a matter of fact, there were three lease agreements available to the board today. We just, we just got approved. Genita will, will take over now and explain about fiber optics technology, our commercial fiber lease businesses, and other things.
You want to go to the next slide? Sorry. Okay, so I think Samson kind of went through what we do. And I'm, maybe the question for some is, well, what actually is fiber, right? What is it and why is it important at DWP? So fiber optic cable contains fiber strands that are made of glass, and these strands transport data in the form of light. So we deploy fiber cable with up to 432 strands. And we do install the fiber on DWP assets and in right-of-ways. And what that really means, we use our power poles and our underground infrastructure to expand our fiber network. So one of, some of the advantages of DWP having its own fiber, it's reliable, it's high speed. We do have our own construction forces that can maintain. And one of the, one of the things that we like to highlight is the cost avoidance. So because we do have our own fiber, and like we said, that's really our primary mission to support the power and water within the department, we do have a cost avoidance of about $10 million in annual cost so that we're not leasing fiber from other providers, we have our own. And I know here, we're water and power. We always hear about water and power. How does communications play a role in all of this, right? So one of, one of the things that we do want to, and I come from distribution, so I was in power for like 15 years. I came over to telecom, and I was like, how do I tie it all together? So one of the really important things to know is, in order to keep the power running and the water flowing, there's a lot of data that needs to be evaluated and data that needs to be sent back to the, you know, the main centers. And this is why we have fiber, because we utilize that data to transform information about, you know, what's the usage of the power? We, you know, we transfer it back to our centers, and that's how they determine, you know, what's being used, what we need to do for both our water and our power systems. And then we also use communication just for the protection of our power system. So that's something really important, and it's an important role that it plays in the department. So one of the things that we do offer, if you could go to the next slide. We do offer two products. We have a dark antlet fiber. And what dark fiber means is just cable that's installed and ready to use. It's just like power cable that's installed, but it's not energized. It's just there, it's ready to use. And then those dark fiber circuits are handed over to our different customers that we have, whether they be in-house or our commercial customers. And then they install and manage their own equipment on, like, on that cable itself. And lit fiber really means, in a sense, lighting up the fiber cable, and that requires network equipment. So do, we do provide bandwidth transport services for certain customers, and we have that also for our internal customers. And I think we, we did have some lease agreements on the agenda today. And so we just wanted to kind of talk about our commercial fiber business. We do leases of dark fibers that are not presently needed for DWP. And I think you asked the question, the percentage, it's less than 10%. And really, we evaluate, anytime there's a request for a lease, the system is evaluated and made, and it's, the determination is made case by case whether we can do that, because our primary role is the department. And we also do offer bandwidth transport services, which is, like I mentioned, is our lit services. So the revenue that we get from the fiber leases is deposited to our power revenue fund, and that's also the money that's used to, for the maintenance and operations of the whole fiber network. We, we currently have about 72 lease agreements with 33 different commercial customers. And we do not lease to individual residences, and we are not an internet provider. So that's one of the main things. Our contracts typically are one to five years, depending on the contract. And our leases do undergo the GM or the board approval process, as I'm sure you guys have had these in front of you in the past. So leasing excess fiber cable doesn't really add any significant cost to the operations and maintenance. Like we said, the fiber cable has many strands. So whether we have leases on that cable, because, you know, it could have up to 400 strands, or not, we still have to maintain that cable. So even if we don't have any leases that are fed from that one cable that has up to 400 strands, we have to maintain that cable because we use it for our day-to-day internal operations. And the revenue generated from the leases that we have actually covers the cost and the maintenance of our entire fiber network that we use for the department as a whole.
Do you know what the surplus is on that? It covers it and then some, I mean.
It covers it and then some, some. So, so it definitely, yeah, so we do an evaluation. So we do have a way that we can track, track the cost of our overall fiber network and see, you know, how much we have to utilize to maintain the entire fiber network. Like I said, it's hard to really track just the commercial because, like I said, it's a cable with multiple strands. So if a cable is damaged, you know, we're, we're working on that cable. It's not really a strand-by-strand kind of repair. It's a little bit different than the power system.
That makes sense.
So.
Is, are we in a, I know this will, this is probably a very naive question, but are we in the process of switching from wire to fiber optics in, in more areas than we're currently doing it? Or is it, we have fiber where we have fiber, and we have cable where we have cable?
Copper, you mean? Okay. So, yes, so some, there are areas where we still have copper, but that's, so this is one of the things that, you know, Samson is going to talk about.
That's the copper that hasn't been stolen yet, right?
So we are, we're gonna, we're doing a fiber expansion strategy. So we're going to evaluate the whole system, and that's going to be one of the things we do. We are in the process of, you know, slowly converting from copper to fiber when it's feasible. And then Samson's going to kind of go into the detail. We do have a fiber expansion. That's one of the things that's being analyzed, is the whole system, telecommunications system, and what's really the best option and which direction to go.
If you're going to get to it, still, I'll wait. My question was how long it'll take us to convert and what kind of a timeline we're on. But if, if that's part of your presentation, I'll, I can wait.
That particular topic is not in the presentation, but what we are trying to do is get a comprehensive fiber expansion strategy to see our needs, present needs, and new locations that we can add, and how we can support future technologies that the department is undergoing.
So Richard, I think the other aspect of this is, this ties to our expansion of our assets, our replacement of our assets, because they're critical communication pieces for our SCADA communications, our substation upgrades, and our infrastructure. So it's, it goes hand in hand with that long-term resource planning and like all asset replacement projects. So I think it goes in the same schedule as that, right? And I, one of the things that... And I, one of the things, I think DWP has a lot of fiber assets. They're not always redundant, so one of the strategic points that the team has to look into is, do we have the right fiber in the right places in the right way? But the amount of fiber we have is pretty impressive.
Great, thank you. I may, I just want to add to this. The intent here is to do a strategic study of our fiber network and how we can make it as redundant as possible, fail-safe, so that the communication that's actually carried by this backbone for, as a critical infrastructure, is extremely important for power system and water system operations. So it's about building redundancy, it's making the system as robust as possible.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, yeah, let me talk about what our plan is. As you all know, the electrical distribution system especially is changing, especially with the introduction of GER, energy resources, customer PV systems, electric charging stations, demand resources, energy storage systems. So these resources, resources are distributed throughout the City of Los Angeles, geographically located in the brain. So we have, we feel that there is a need to, to have, to expand on our existing fiber infrastructure, to be able to integrate these resources into our SCADA and distribution management systems. So on the project side, we have several transmission and distribution side projects, which we can utilize to expand our fiber infrastructure. So, so to achieve this, you know, we are looking into a professional services agreement, basically to look into our infrastructure and expand and explore ways to expand infrastructure to be able to integrate all these different technologies. And also, of course, provide redundancy and reliability to our existing SCADA and power system, water system networks. The purpose of the expansion is basically to do, to do studies and as well as evaluate ways to reduce network provider costs for, for us, for the department. So here are some of the objectives we expect to get from this fiber optics expansion strategy. One would be study our dark fiber design and maybe come up with some recommendations in ways that we can improve. Same thing for the lead services, communication transport services evaluation, and look at the different backhaul, fiber backhaul technologies available and see if we can improve on that aspect as well, and evaluate what kind of software we can use to support and maintain or operate this fiber infrastructure. And also, where are we on the market side, our pricing compared to other providers in the industry, and do a price survey along with the expansion strategy, and also evaluate our operation and maintenance causes to make sure that we are getting what we deserve to get. So in a, so in, in general, these are the aspects that we're looking at. One would be a comprehensive assessment of the infrastructure, what we have, what we have, what's our needs, not only for now, but for the future as well. So do a comprehensive assessment of our infrastructure and our needs, not only for the Department of Water and Power, but the city and other businesses in, in Los Angeles area, and evaluate what we have, what, what locations can be added to expand on this. Then design strategies as well, fiber design, basically, our core requirement would be to provide redundant and reliable power system for water and power system operations. Then, of course, we hope to get implementation plans, so how we can achieve these goals. So other things we look at as well is scalability and future proofing, like the plan we get from this RFP or this professional service agreement will be a solution that allows us scalability and future expansion as well, introduce the department, industry best practices to our system, our operation. Also, one thing which is really most important is security and redundancy for our system, provide robust and redundant paths to our control rooms, control centers, and our core functions, and also software solution, management solutions. So to summarize, what we hope to get from this professional services agreement will be evaluation, cost benefit analysis of this expansion process, reduce the need for dependency on, of outside service providers for data transport services, and also provide additional revenue, basically to, which can help us maintain our entire fiber infrastructure as well, and also the, like, consider our lease agreements, master templates, and make sure that O and M costs are covered in our lease agreements, and also reach more L A D W P and city locations.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
When we're leasing, what percentage of the business is lit fiber versus dark fiber in terms of what we're, what we're leasing now?
It's mostly dark fiber that we're leasing. We have a very small percentage of lit services that we provide contracts for.
Is the network, networking layer connected to the lit fiber shared at all with DWP traffic, or is it?
So we do have an ice, the way that, you know, I'm not the expert for the network, but really the way that it's set up, we have a multi-layer protection scheme that has different firewall protection, and that lit services doesn't actually tie back to the grid or our SCADA system.
It is completely isolated.
It's isolated, and then each customer that we provide lit services to, they have their own isolated service, so they, you know, they're not sharing any path or anything like that.
Okay, so there's, in essence, a drywall between our lit service and their lit service.
In a sense, yes, it's all virtual, but yes, there is, there is isolated system that's secure.
But to Dr. Pickle's question, though, if, if a customer of ours on that system gets hacked, our system's still protected because they are, each one of those cables is, fiber optics, fiber optics rather, is an isolated system.
It's a virtual isolated system, yes. Because the lit services, it's, it's related to like a network, it's not, it's not actually per the physical.
It's not physically isolated, it's virtually isolated.
Virtually, yeah.
So does a virtual firewall stop real-time hacking?
So we, the way that the system is connected, the, our lit services customers are not connect, it's not using the same paths as our SCADA. So if somebody, if one of our customers is hacked, they, they cannot get into the DWP system. There's no way for.
Virtually or otherwise?
Or otherwise, yeah. There's no other way, there's no way to do that.
So it is a little bit physical and a little bit virtual, meaning like, we operate the lighting on either end of that line.
Yes.
And so when someone licenses that space from us, they're running their data through the process that's going to light up that line, but the line itself is physically removed, the line that that, that their data is flowing across is physically different than the line our SCADA is flowing across?
Yes.
Okay.
For that cable, for that fiber.
For that strand.
Yes, for that strand.
For that strand.
That makes sense to me.
Yes.
Other questions? All right. Thank you for the presentation. We look forward to the progress and taking a look at what else we need, what we need to be doing going forward, but it's impressive, and we want to make sure DWP stays at the forefront of all these changes, so.
I think it's important that we highlight the fact that we don't leave OT behind when we're doing power design and infrastructure. They go hand in hand. In the past, OT is an afterthought, and then they come and try to catch up, right? Versus, versus designing with OT in mind, so whenever we're stringing new wire or new circuits, OT is part of that engineering discussion, yeah.
Yeah, one other thing, Richard, the question that the board asks is about the cost of service of how, how much we're charging the customers, and I think I asked staff to have an annual review, looking back, and adjustments to ups to that, so the board knows that every year we look at our cost of service and, and we have the latest information coming to the board.
I will note that this completes a board request made in early 2013. Thank you.
2013, okay. Oh, we weren't around, but.
I can't say we're not on top of that stuff, huh? Yeah, thank you.
So who's closing that action item?
Moving forward, until we get the strategy done, we'll be bringing only lease agreements that are no longer than one year in duration, but once we have the strategy done, and we'll have a better look at how lease agreements should be structured in the future. But between now and the, the end of the study, we'll be bringing lease agreements that are no longer, not, not longer than one year.
And I assume the reason for that is because the field is changing so quickly and the environment is changing so quickly.
That's correct.
We don't want to get locked in prematurely.
That's correct.
I mean, I want to, we do, in all our clauses, in all our lease agreements, we do have a clause that allows the department to terminate the lease for any reason. If, you know, if we decided we need these fibers, we do have a clause in all our agreements that we can actually terminate with 180-day notice. So even if it's a five-year lease agreement, we do have that flexibility to terminate for any reason, so that is, that is an option.
And if we need the capacity for our primary mission.
Yes, you know, we're, we're nowhere near it, and so we, honestly, we evaluate each contract, but we are, we are nowhere near that capacity for, so then, but we do have that ability.
And one thing I want to add is, we also have language in the contract to be able to do market price adjustments, so if need be, we can always evaluate and do price adjustments.
Great.
How often do we do that? Do we exercise that often?
We always, we do review, but honestly, the communication competition, the prices on the decline because of competition, different business are participating. So we didn't have to increase that, but we check our O and M courses over year over year and see where are we in the market. Actually, we do market price survey every five years to see where we are compared to the competition and make adjustments.
We usually go when, when we renew. I think the new standards that you're putting in is every year we look at, we look at, so we don't have to wait till the, the end of the contract to do adjustments. So that will give us a discipline for us to review our pricing.
Definitely, right? Every year we, we evaluate where we are and make adjustments if needed.
And also, as Janice mentioned, the strategic plan that they're doing, it's probably, once we have some, some findings, is we'll do a, a, a review with the board on where we are and where we're headed with that strategic plan. That's going to be very critical for us to have a visibility on that.
Okay.
Great. Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Now we're doing the second part.
Yes, Commissioners, good morning. The next presentation is on the Green New Deal Water Supply Goals, Status, and Progress. That presentation is going to be delivered by Sabrina Su from our Water Resources Division.
My name is Sabrina Su. I'm the manager of Resource Development and Watershed Management in the Water Resources Division. I'm here today to provide you an update of the water system's progress towards meeting our water supply goals as identified in the 2019 Sustainable City Plan, also known as the Green New Deal. While I'll be focusing on the Green New Deal today, I do want to note that there was an item that was for action earlier today, that is the adoption of the LA County Water Plan as a guiding document to support regional water resilience. The LA County Water Plan was developed with input from over 200 agencies, including ourselves, and this water plan is focused on regional water supply goals, and they do consider the goals that we have in the Green New Deal. And while you'll see that we have been making excellent progress towards meeting the various goals outlined in the Green New Deal, I will discuss how things have changed since 2019, when these goals were initially published, and how that may impact us moving forward. But first off, I would like to start off with some terminology. Consistency with our definitions and terminology conventions are critical when we talk about water supply goals, because what constitutes as a supply can vary. For example, the Green New Deal has a very specific classification for what is to be considered a local supply. It tries to balance the need for future investments while also recognizing tremendous past achievements. The Urban Water Management Plan defines supplies through a forecasting lens for the purposes of customer use and water supply reliability. It identifies supplies, needs as well as potential supply needs, with less emphasis on historic. And lastly, the water supply to our customers is what we report on an annual basis, and that is purely focusing on historic actual use. So how does that impact what is considered a supply? Starting with the simplest definition, the supply to our customers are the supplies that are produced to meet customer needs, and that includes imported water from the Los Angeles aqueduct, imported water supplies purchased from the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, as well as local groundwater and water reuse that is used to offset potable demands. Water reuse today accounts for not only non-potable reuse applications, but in the future, water supplies from indirect and direct portable reuse, such as from our groundwater replenishment program and Pure Water Los Angeles, would also fall in this category. Next, we have the Urban Water Management definition, which also accounts for planned conservation efforts. Since the Urban Water Management Plan focuses on forecasts, unrealized conservation would result in the need for additional supplies to meet projected customer demands. And then, the Green New Deal expands on that by also accounting for other beneficial water reuse for the environment that does not directly offset potable demands, as well as recycled water produced by LA but used outside the city. Our investments in stormwater capture capacity is also included, since actual capture can fluctuate depending on hydrology, and since LA has been at the forefront of advocating for conservation as a way of life. The Green New Deal also accounts for all historic investments we have made in our conservation program. As you can see, the percentage one could calculate for our supply portfolio can change dramatically, depending on which of these definitions you are using to determine what supplies should be included in the calculation. I'll have more on that later, but I first want to go through some of the progress we've made to date. Starting with our progress towards our goal of reaching 150,000 acre feet of stormwater capture capacity by 2035. We're making very good progress on this goal. In 2021, we completed our Tahunga Spreading Grounds Enhancement Project, which is the photo that you see on the far left, and this project doubled the capacity of that facility from 8,000 acre, 8,000 acre feet a year to 16,000 acre feet of year of capture capacity. We also have several ongoing projects, one of which is the Pacoima Spreading Grounds Enhancement Project, which is also supposed to be completed by later this year, and this will approximately double the spreading capacity in that facility as well. This project is in partnership with the LA County Flood Control District, and they remain critical partners in our efforts to increase our stormwater capture capacity. Another notable ongoing program is our Stormwater Capture Parks Program, which was approved by your board at the last board meeting. Approval of this item allows us to move forward with a significant part of the parks program. However, you can see in this figure here, there is still a lot of work to be done in order for us to reach our goal of 150,000 acre feet of capture capacity by 2035. And this includes a need for large, high percolation rate projects that will require your board's support in developing partnerships, both locally and regionally.
Does that include the water being, that'll be eventually stored at the Labange Headwaters?
That would be a potential project to be considered, but it really is all areas within the city that allow us to have large spaces for capturing larger amounts of water. So we are looking at all the potential spaces in the city, but as you know, in a very urbanized city as Los Angeles, there aren't very many places, so we're looking really hard, especially at all those partnerships that we can forge.
But we built that specifically to store water. So my question is, is that being, is that considered then a local water supply?
Do you mean the Headworks facility?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. So the Headworks facility is on one of our reservoirs within our system, so that isn't necessarily considered in the stormwater capture goal. That is within our system, a reservoir that is used in our operations and not necessarily to replenish the groundwater basin.
So when you report on how much groundwater storage we have, that's not counted?
Correct, that's not counted.
No, because it doesn't infiltrate, it just holds in the reservoir.
But it's storage, it means, yeah. But it's storage, it means, yeah.
Yes, it is storage, but it's not considered in this particular goal.
Sabrina, the gray part of this, obviously, is we have a long way to go, especially before 2035. Can you give me an idea of the department's confidence on our ability to hit this goal here by 2035? What kind of projects we have in development? And then someone's always telling us about, you know, we need big projects, really big scale. Those are really hard to get, as you said, in a really highly dense, highly urbanized environment such as Los Angeles. We've been looking at more creative avenues like the Parks Project we just, you know, confirmed at the last board meeting, but those are such small drops in the bucket comparatively. So can you give us an idea of like, what, if anything's in the hopper, what our level of confidence about hitting this goal by 2035 looks like? Is this a time that we need to redouble our efforts and how can the board support?
Yes, thank you for that question, Vice President Regrau. It is a really great time to focus on this and to see how we can forge these additional partnerships locally and regionally. And the L.A. County is actually putting together a task force that will bring together local agencies and the regional agency to discuss this matter specifically. And there is a task force that I am looking forward to participate in later this month. And we will be discussing opportunities and these multi-beneficial projects and really these areas of larger percolation spaces that we'll be able to partner with others in the city and other regional entities. So we do have some additional concepts. So you can see on this, on the slide, we have Parks Program Phase Two. So we are looking at partnering with our city departments for spaces that the city does own, because there really aren't too many available spaces out there right now. So we have projects like that that are in the hopper, but really looking forward to the opportunities in the task force to discuss more with the county and other partners within the area.
Okay, thank you.
Where are we or where did we all come down last time we took a look at the gravel pits in Sun Valley as potential storage?
That is still something that is a potential, as well as other large areas that are available. So that's something that would be in consideration and will be evaluated.
So it still has not been evaluated?
At this time, it is when there are, there is an availability of the spaces that somebody is looking to sell. But at this time, that hasn't been something that has been brought up of late. But we are keeping our eyes open to see what opportunities are available. So if something like that comes up, we will be evaluating.
We've been talking about that for 20 years. Just surprised it's never been evaluated, because I keep being told that we can't do it. But if we haven't evaluated, I'm curious how we came to the conclusion we can't do it.
I'll have to look into that, President Katz.
Thank you.
My other, my other concern, just to underline it before we move on, is that, you know, those big projects, not understanding really in this gray area what we kind of have in planning and development versus like what we just have no idea is going to be in that gray area yet, doesn't give us a good idea of how much we should be focused on as a board or really how much we should be worried about not hitting this goal by 2035. I think that these projects are, the products that are needed are individually and collectively massive. And the amount of work that needs to be done to prepare some of these areas for infiltration, for instance, could take 10 years. And if they're going to, if it's going to take that long, we're likely pushing beyond our goal. And so I really appreciate this understanding of like where we've been, the progress we've made lately, where we're focused now. This gray area does make me just a little nervous that there's not more detail there, or at least an admission that we, we just don't know. And if we don't know, then I think we all need to get collectively a little more worried about what that means for our ability to hit this goal on time.
Right. And in that gray area, there are some projects that we had listed previously. But over the past nine years since our Stormwater Capture Master Plan has been published, and our Stormwater Capture Master Plan is really the main plan that identified a lot of these potential projects and opportunities that we have within the city to, to implement these types of projects. And since then, we have evaluated some projects that were no longer deemed feasible. But we are looking to reopen certain discussions with local and regional partners to see if there is a different appetite for certain projects now. So while that gray area, yes, it does look quite large, we do have some ideas, some, some concepts that we would like to continue to evaluate, but we do need to make sure that they are feasible. So I'd say that we have some here that we still need to evaluate, and we are certainly able to come back and provide more information as the feasibility of those projects are evaluated and when we deem some to be feasible or others to be not feasible, and also whether or not our partners are open to working with us for certain projects.
Sabrina, if I may, I think it'd be great if we get the gray area in a heat map of what you just described, based on the pipeline of what we have and whatever's gap that we don't have anything on the pipeline, so that we know what the true gap is of, do we need adhesion and new things versus these are different maturity levels on execution to completion and what the average timeline will be. Because I think to your question, it's a big TBD in this slide. So I feel like there's some TBD, but there's some stuff that is just not as mature for us to put in this. And I think it will give you a little bit more sense of what's really missing versus what we're working.
Or just isn't ready for public.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, totally.
Well, Matt, one, could you maybe distribute to the board the Stormwater Capture Program?
Yes.
If you'd mention, please. We'll take another look at that.
Yeah, yes. I mean, a big question from our environmental community is where does Pure L.A. Water fits into this strategy? And if so, it's part of the TBD or not because of the timeline of construction? So that's a discussion that we need to have as well.
And a big part of that frankly is the larger sites that are around the city of L.A. are contaminated.
Yeah.
So, you know, you have to build in also cleaning that stuff out.
Mediation, yeah.
And then that takes a long time. But I, one thing that I want to make sure that we are very clear, and Salma, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is we are committed to Pure Water L.A., and we're working as fast as we can to get Pure Water L.A. We do have construction timelines that are going to be impacting the 2035 timeline, right? Because of where we need to move the water to and the level of infrastructure that we have to build to do that. But we're not backing away from it. We're putting a lot of effort into it. And so I'll open it to you. Sorry to put you on the spot, but here you are.
Not a problem whatsoever. Well, first of all, just wanted to clarify something. So Pure Water Los Angeles is recycled water. I mean, we're talking here about stormwater capture.
Yeah.
Although the idea is, as part of Pure Water Los Angeles, is to take some of the recycled water and use it to recharge the San Fernando Basin, which is the basin that we're talking about here today, or at least as part of the presentation Sabrina is providing. But yes, we are committed to recycle water program for the city of L.A. We've been working very diligently with environmental and the environment in ensuring that we bring to this board a comprehensive, you know, analysis of what's feasible, but also what's affordable. I think you heard me mention in the past that we are looking at a program that's a multi-billion dollar program. And at the end, we need to make sure that we have something that's affordable for our ratepayers. There's no way I can get $20 billion in grants. I wish I could say that. So we recognize that there's a potential impact to the ratepayers, and we need to be cognizant of that specifically. I wanted to address a little bit about the gray area. Part of the reason why you're not seeing a list of projects in the gray area is because what I also don't want to do is to now have the folks that perhaps own these properties think, oh, they're going to come and negotiate with me. So I already put myself in a position where they can start jacking up the price on, on properties that we may be looking at. So that's a part of the reason why that's not here. I think we will provide to this board and to the general manager a more comprehensive list of what we're looking at. There are some that are being looked at closely, and we think they're good options. There may be a little bit that is, we're not certain, but we can provide a little more certainty. I didn't feel that it was appropriate to put it in this presentation because it could drive our negotiation prices up automatically.
Well said, well said. Thank you.
And Salma, you bring up a really interesting question for me that I was going to get to later, but we'll just do it now. You know, talking about the different things that go into this calculation, be it sort of stormwater capture capacity versus recycled water, for instance. You mentioned that a lot of these projects have overlaps. So Pure Water L.A., for instance, some of that recycled water, that, that DPR water will be, I mean, sorry, that IPR water will be used to recharge the San Fernando Basin. How do we ensure in this process that we don't double count those gallons?
No, that's a great question. So when you look at Pure Water Los Angeles, the strategy would be to build a facility that allows you to basically operate 24/7. So that means we're always going to produce and recycle water. And those dry years, the idea would be that we can take a fair amount of that water and put it into the, into the ground. Strategically, what I want to do however, is to take that water to the L.A. Aqueduct Filtration Plant. Because now we're talking about wet molecules of water that I can put into my system almost instantaneously, which means that automatically immediately reduces my dependence on imported purchased water. But in those wet years where we have a lot of stormwater that's being captured by the county and then released into the spreading basins, we're going to have to have that balance there. You know, I believe that maximizing the use of water from hyperion is critical, but I also need to make sure that I don't have unintended consequences in the water distribution system. You know, because one of the things that you're doing as you start using more of this water, you could be backing off the demands from our storage facilities, and there could be water quality implications. So it's a balance that I, I need to make to ensure that I have not just the water available, but also the quality of the water that's needed to serve our communities.
Yeah, and for those of you that don't know or haven't been paying attention, you know, the mayor has sort of tasked us with a climate cabinet-style project that's really focused on this LEDWP, L.A. Sand integration. And we've been meeting, you know, once a month in these long meetings to really get Pure Water L.A. on track. And we really appreciated that joint presentation from L.A. Sand at the last board meeting. And I'm, you know, Narit and I sit on that and are really confident about the direction we're going. And then I really, I really appreciate that need for balance. But back to the question, like when we, when we generate a gallon of recycled water, be it, you know, I mean, it's clear to me if it's direct potable reuse, we, you know, ship it up to the, you know, beginning of the system and it, you know, we, we satisfy their eggs and it serves someone as wet water out of their tap. But if it's, you know, indirect reuse and we're taking that and recharging a basin, for instance, in the San Fernando, does that gallon in this equation count as storm, as like a capture capacity? Or does it count as recycling? And how do we ensure that there's a line in the, in the sort of accounting between the two?
Got it, got it. It counts as recycled water that's being put into the ground. Does that count as stormwater capture?
I mean, that, that one gallon is against discharging it and losing it versus storing it. So it's still recycled, tagged as a recycled gallon.
It tagged.
It tagged. And, and the storage is where we're putting that recycled water.
So I think your question is, are we displacing the gallon of storage from the capture accounting? If we're pushing one gallon of recycled water into the storage?
Like, are we limiting our, our stormwater capacity by filling it with recycled water? And then if we're doing both, how are we making sure that those gallons are being accounted for separately? And not double counting the gallon of recycled water as also captured water?
Yeah, so it, it does count as recycled water. Obviously, any recycled water produced will be metered, so we'll know exactly how much water is being produced at the plants, but also what's being put into the ground for percolation purposes. But we will be able to actually separate those two and know exactly which one is which. As far as the question of putting all the water into the same basin, one of the things that we have been working on is a study on the San Fernando Basin. Because now we're talking about having stormwater capture with a capacity of 150,000 acre feet. We have Donald C. Tillman Project that's going to start construction later this year. That's another 17,000 acre feet a year. And then on top of that, now we're going to have Pure Water Los Angeles. So one of the studies that staff is working on is how long would it take for us to fill up that basin? And under what conditions? Obviously, you need to make assumptions about climate, because it depends on kind of, kind of, you know, water year you have. But if you take the past recent history and replicate that, that might be an indication of what you could have in the future. Because we want to make sure that we don't fill it up too quickly. Now, as you know, Commissioner, one of the things that we're also working on is on regional partnerships. You know, the Recycle Water Program is an opportunity for us to leverage the resources that our partners have in the region and really take this water and make it for regional beneficial use. First and foremost, we want to make sure that we take care of Angelinos, because this is city of L.A. water. But we also see an opportunity to leverage the pipelines and the storage capacity that other entities in the area have. For example, the Metropolitan Water District, which is a wholesaler, and we are one of the founding members. They have a program similar to ours, where we can leverage their pipelines that they will be installing and the storage that they're going to be putting the water into, to also put that there for regional benefit. So all those things have been looked at together. So, but great question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Think we can leverage that with MWD so they don't raise our property taxes and say they have a budget shortfall. How about that?
We, we have a conversation later about that.
I think we should have that conversation.
From the ratepayer perspective, we have at least four levels in this challenge. At the broadest level, we have Western Water. And we're talking about a lot of people divided into a lot of money. I don't know those numbers. You know, probably know them better than I.
They're big.
They're all big. To stabilize the California system, including the Delta, it's about $20 billion divided by 30 or 40 million people, followed by the MWD system, which is 20 billion divided by 20 million people. And finally, L.A., which is 20 billion divided by 4 million. From a ratepayer perspective, I know which one I'd try to do first, but we really have to do the work on them all.
And I think I'd be remiss to not point out that in the Central Valley, that doesn't get divided up the same way that urban rural might get divided down here. So, and we pay for that.
We are, we're well aware. We did a detailed analysis, considering hundreds of scenarios of that about five years ago. And the answer is somewhere between $1 and $4 per household per year.
No matter how many scenarios you do, ag always comes out on top.
Everyone focuses on the highest one.
That's another discussion, but thank you, Fred. Sorry, don't mind us.
This is a great discussion. And before we leave this particular slide, the one thing I do want to point out is that the stormwater capture capacity, what we're focusing on, is having the facilities available to capture water to replenish the basin. So whether that be natural rainfall or imported water, recycled water, water that the L.A. County Flood Control District is able to release from their dams, it is a facility that will be able to capture all that water and replenish the basin. So that's what this capacity concept is for us.
And part of what I assume you're looking at, which is why there's so much emphasis on the San Fernando Valley, is capturing the water and storing it where it's also going to be distributed from. Because right now, everything goes out to the ocean or the south end of the system. And that doesn't help us much if we want to redistribute it back to ratepayers, or our service area, rather.
And we also consider the soil types in the area and the San Fernando Basin. And the areas that we're looking at has favorable soil conditions in order for us to infiltrate water in there. And the next one is groundwater remediation projects. And this is another major supply goal in the Green New Deal. And the goal is to complete our San Fernando Groundwater Basin Remediation Facilities by 2025. As you may be familiar with, our ability to produce groundwater from the San Fernando Basin has been impacted by the presence of contamination. And we're happy to report that the San Fernando Basin Remediation Facilities are expected to be completed in early 2025. Once these facilities are fully operational, our groundwater production will be able to gradually increase, starting with pumping our treatment wells, followed by our preferred or clean wells, and then ultimately working towards our full entitlement, at which time we're expected to nearly double the amount of water that we've been pumping out of that basin in the past 20, 10 years.
What's the capacity of the basin?
The groundwater capacity. So in the basin, our groundwater rights are about 87,000 acre feet. So we're looking to be able to gradually grow into that allocation.
And you said it'll be complete in '25. Will it be operational in '25?
Right, and we do have, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so there are three facilities. The first one, North Hollywood West, will be completed later this year. Then Tohanga and North Hollywood Centralized Facilities will be completed by the beginning of 2025, and they will be operational. We're already running water through them. It's not water we're producing, it's heading into the system. Right now, we're in the commissioning and testing of the facilities, but they will all be, all of them will be completed at the beginning of next year. You asked a question about the capacity of San Fernando Basin. That basin has a capacity of around 550,000 acre feet. Now, we're not the only agency that pumps water from the San Fernando Basin. Our water rights are 87,000 acre feet a year. Obviously, as you start augmenting how much you put in there, you also have the ability to store additional water. So that's going to be one of the things that we're going to be doing also, is being able to even pull out even more than the 87,000, because we're augmenting the amount of water by using recycled water to augment the groundwater.
Who else has water rights in the basin in large numbers?
I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but cities like Burbank, for example, they, they can take water from there. So there are a few other agencies that have actually water rights there. We, I believe, are the largest, and we're also the ones working on the biggest programs to the remediation of the groundwater basin. The way it's going to work is when the The way it's going to work is when the facilities are in place, for the first couple of years, and I started being touched on this, we're going to be pumping from the what we call the remediation wells. These are the ones that are basically sitting in the middle of the plumes. The idea is to remove that plume, shrink it, and make sure it doesn't migrate and starts contaminating wells that are not right now being contaminated. So that's a strategy. Once we do around two years of that, then we significantly will be able to increase the pumping. We have 115 wells in the valley. Half of them were so, I cannot operate right now. Once we get the projects done, the idea is to have.
That's for the contamination?
Yes, because of contamination, because of contamination. So these facilities will allow us to be able to fully utilize the wellfields that we have and the wells that we have in there.
There's a little more timing in there, which is helpful, I think. So this sort of gradual, piece by piece, we get the systems operational by the end of '25, beginning of '26. The three plants are going. We pump remediation wells first to keep the plumes small. You say that takes two years. And then we move to our sort of preferred wells or the clean wells where we start producing water in our entitlement. And then eventually, we scale to hopefully pull our whole entitlement and then maybe even go past entitlement through banking. You know, we put some water in the San Fernando and pull the water out of San Fernando. Just getting to our entitlement to 87,000 acre feet a year, how many years is that going to take us in this sort of gradual approach?
I don't know if I have it off the top of my head, but I would say it would probably be a few years. If we're doing two years of operations under remediation wells only after that, and we'll have to work obviously with the regulators.
To know if it's working.
But I would say after the two-year mark, but hopefully not too much past that, where we'll have the ability to start using or fully utilizing the San Fernando Basin.
So it's within this 2035 event horizon, we anticipate getting to our full entitlement in San Fernando?
That's my expectation, absolutely.
Okay, that's helpful.
Great. And so our next one is the groundwater replenishment project. And this is also a goal that's outlined in the Green New Deal. This target was to replenish the San Fernando Basin with 17,000 acre feet of year of recycled water from the Donald C. Tillman Water Reclamation Plant to recharge the San Fernando Basin. There has been many developments since 2019 when this goal was published. And there were new opportunities that have surfaced since then. This project was, it's also commonly known as GWR, but this GWR project will be our first potable reuse project in LA. And this objective is to replenish the San Fernando Basin with highly purified recycled water. The item that, the GWR item will be before your board later this year. And upon your approval, it will allow the project to proceed with the start of construction and groundbreaking later this year. Another key aspect of this project is that it is larger than originally contemplated. And it is now expected to produce 21,000 acre feet a year, which is enough water for 250,000 customers as opposed to the Green New Deal goal of 17,000 acre feet per year. And that is in the green on your slide of what the original goal is. But just to note that we are looking to produce more out of that facility and looking to break ground upon your approval later this year.
So where are the Hanson Spreading Rounds or where?
It is near the Hanson Dam. So it is, like you see on this map, it's generally just mainly northeast of here.
In the Tohanga Wash?
I believe it is.
The reason I'm asking is, I mean, Hanson Dam at one point was a dam with water in it as opposed to a dam with dirt and sand in it primarily. And it's, all that comes out of the mountains every time we have a storm. And I know for years there were some operations to try and take it out and do other stuff with it. But you could never, no one could ever keep up with the amount of volume coming in. How do we protect our Spreading Rounds against that?
That would be something that we'll continue to discuss with LA County. So that is something, and Hanson Dam is one of, or Hanson Spreading Rounds, that is one of the facilities that the county also operates and owns. So they would be a key partner in that. And we'll continue those conversations with them to ensure that we're able to protect the supplies that we're putting in there.
Because, I mean, considering how, I mean, it's a critical piece of recharge, and it's at the mouth of the wash there. So, you know, unless it's not going to rain for a while, you know, that was one of the benefits of the drought. It wasn't filling with sand. But we're out of those days apparently. So I'm just concerned where that is and, you know, because we count, we count the recycled water as what we're counting on. But if that problem's not solved, we won't be able to count on it.
That's a very good point. And I would certainly put that in my notes in the discussions with the county later this month to make sure that we address that as well.
I'd be curious as to what the county says.
I can tell you that I had a conversation with Mark Pastrella, who is head of LA County Public Works. And they have a program for sediment removal because they recognize that the capacity of the stormwater, you know, flood control dams is limited. So they are looking to secure funding to be able to expand their sediment removal programs. They've asked the department to provide support, support letters, which we have, so that they're able to deal with the sediment, so that we do have full capacity to be able to put water in those areas there, so.
If they can figure out something to do with the sediment, you can clean out Hanson Dam and have a dam again also. I mean, there's a lot of capacity if that was possible.
Absolutely. Am I seeing this correctly? The green area shown that says the Tillman and then the water purification concept? Are you saying that that building is to be built? And what's the timeline on the building?
Well, there will be an item before your board in the next month or so for action for this GWR project to start construction and to break ground. So we are expecting that after your board takes action on this that within about two years, we'd be able to have this facility in service. So by the end of 2027 is when we're anticipating that this building, hopefully it looks like this. It looks like a nice building. This building will be built and we'll be able to have the recycled water used to replenish the groundwater basin at Hanson.
Is this like a facade and there's something inside it? Or I mean, it's not a, it's not a business type? It's just a facade in essence, this building?
Yes, yes, it is. This is just a rendering of what the facility would look like from the outside.
Well, so we already have those plans drawn up by an architectural firm, correct?
Right, there's a consultant that was retained to work on the design of the facility.
So this particular project is a design-build. This is a partnership with LA Sanitation and Environment. They already have the consultants that are working on the design. The idea is that they're going to come back to us with what they call a guaranteed maximum price. They'll say, based on where we're at with the design and where we are with construction costs, we estimate here's the cost. So when it comes back to the board is to approve that guaranteed maximum price and give the green light for the contractors then to go ahead and move with construction. So design-build projects are becoming more common. It's a way to expedite construction. And that's what Sabrina mentioned, our goal is to have this completed by 2027.
I see what my fellow commissioner here leaned in and said. She was noticing my confusion because it looks like a church from this. Why, it's like, had I napped or something?
That's because they're praying for rain.
Hey, and Selmo, is one of the questions I think that Commissioner Pender was asking is that, is this office building or this is filtration equipment inside this building?
That is the question, thank you.
This is going to be the filtration facility. This is going to be a water treatment facility. So you're going to have in there microfiltration, reverse osmosis, you know, mechanical electrical equipment.
Because I've been in buildings that look like that and they didn't look like this on the outside. So I was like, am I missing something here?
Yeah, I think this was a rendering that was on early on the process. The actual design is probably taking place now. I cannot tell you if it looks like this or not. But obviously, they want to make sure they design a building that provides the proper space. You know, but also that aesthetically it fits in because there is a facility there right now. This is basically where the Japanese gardens are, you know. So when they're designing this, they got to make sure that it's done in a way that fits in with the design of the overall facility, so.
And there's, you know, once you're, you know, have a budget for a project, if an architect comes up with something creative, you know, good for all of us. Look at this building, right?
True.
If you can build it in two years, I'll get you an award.
Well, I'm happy that these meetings are recorded because in two years.
I mean, I'd love to see it go in two years.
Yeah, well, that's the plan. And we have very aggressive plans, but also we made it clear that this is a high priority for the city of LA. It's the first IPR project, as Sabrina mentioned, and it's important for us to deliver. We've had experiences with other design-build projects, like the remediation facilities. And I can tell you that you certainly are able to get things done faster because you're collaboratively working with the designer and the builder, not just in design, but during construction. And you're able to address issues a lot faster and be able to move forward. So that's the plan. If it changes, I certainly will let you know. I think when we come to the board with a guaranteed maximum price, also we'll have an update on the estimated completion time.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have our water conservation programs and goals.
One quick thing on water recycling, because we've all talked about Pure Water, but I just want to note that it's not here. Can you, just for everyone's identification, quickly explain why we're focused on Tillman here and not on Pure Water LA as part of this goal?
Yes, this goal is specific to the Donald C. Tillman facility. So within the Green New Deal, there are several targets. And within the targets, there were specific goals outlined. So you saw one specifically about stormwater capture. And there's one specifically for Donald C. Tillman Water Reclamation Facility. And this one is just by itself for this particular facility. And this project is to address this particular goal. And now for Pure Water Los Angeles, that would be incorporated in another overarching goal. But this one specifically is for this facility and this project.
Yeah, presumably Pure Water Los Angeles doesn't happen on our 2035 timeline. But this would, you know, whatever water we generate there would also contribute to our ability to increase the amount of local water we produce in the calculation, right?
For Pure Water Los Angeles? Well, the Pure Water Los Angeles program is undergoing that master planning process right now. And when the master plan is complete, hopefully it'll provide us some more information on how and when those supplies will be incorporated into the city's water supply portfolio and how that is potentially going to contribute to the goal itself.
Great, and we're still expecting that by the end of this year, I think.
The master plan?
Yeah.
By the end of the year.
Great.
That's the goal.
Thanks.
You're welcome. So on to our conservation program achievements and goals. What I do want to highlight here are the major achievements that Angelinos and our conservation program have been able to achieve. And our program itself has been going strong for over 30 years. Our per capita water use has dropped by about a third in the last 15 years. And our rebate and incentive programs have helped replace over 3.9 million toilets, washing machines, showerheads with higher efficiency devices. We've also replaced over 55 million square feet of turf and continue to offer $5 per square foot for turf replacement along with our landscape efficiency assistance program, which is a direct install program for our customers in disadvantaged communities to replace their turf. And the programs that I just highlighted really has been extremely helpful in allowing us to meet our GPCD goal. These continued investments in our program and that strong recognition of conservation as a way of life by our customers has been helpful in allowing us to hit our 2025 per capita use target of 103 GPCD, two years early, as you can see in this bar chart here. But we do have a slight uptick in demands of late. And we're continuing to work towards getting that back down to meet our 2025 goals and work towards our 2035 goal of 100 GPCD. And just as a reminder, the GPCD figure is an all-inclusive number. And this includes use from all sectors, including industrial, governmental, commercial, as well as residential use. And in this chart, you can see how our historic per capita use in the blue bars have dropped significantly since our Green New Deal baseline was defined in fiscal year 1314. And you can see that on the left side with the green arrow, we were at 133 GPCD in fiscal year ending 14. And our 12-month rolling average in May of 2024 had us at about 104 GPCD.
And Selmo, what was the, when we were discussing this last week, one of you guys had a great way to put the comparison of what we were using in the '70s compared to. Can you remind me what that was?
Yeah, more than likely what the person said is that we use less water today than we did 50 years ago, despite the fact there's a million more people living in the city of Los Angeles. And that's a result of water conservation.
Because that's a very tight way to describe it. And you can't help but be impressed by that number.
Absolutely. Angelinos have done a great job in conserving water. And yes, they do deserve an applause, that's for sure. And we're going to continue to push and press to be as water use efficient as possible. But certainly, there's a great job that they're doing. And Sabrina highlighted something. This is all-inclusive. So this is not just the water being used at homes. This is the water also you'd be using commercial, industrial, institutional. And we're at 104 right now. So it certainly tells you that all in, everybody's doing their part.
And they have to keep it up. They can't go back.
Correct, correct. The good thing that we noticed is that when we've had droughts and we've asked people to conserve even more, we don't see that big rebound that in the past you expected to see. I think people have adjusted their lifestyle to be more water efficient. And the expectation that that will continue to be the case regardless of whether or not we have a drought.
Great, thank you.
And as you can see here, we still have some work to do to meet our goals and our targets in 2025 and also in 2035. And the investments in our conservation program have been very integral in helping us achieve that. Now, bringing it all together, while we are currently at about 48% local, we are on track to meet our goal of reaching 70% local water supplies by 2030, which is five years earlier than the goal set in the Green New Deal. Again, this is using the definition for local supplies as set in the Green New Deal, which includes local groundwater, all water reuse, including environmental beneficial reuse. It also includes stormwater capture capacity, planned and historic hardware conservation, recycled water produced by LA but used outside of the city, and imported supplies from our LA aqueduct and purchases from Metropolitan. And so you could see in the green is the local and the blue is the imported.
But going back to the conversation we had before about the La Bange facility. So that, the acre feet from that aren't in this anywhere.
No, that's not in that. And we do have other facilities, like the La Bange facility throughout our system. So we have, for example, the Los Angeles Reservoir, which is another storage facility. And we treat the La Bange facility as we treat our LA reservoir.
Yeah, so just for clarity, the reservoirs that we have at Headworks on La Bange facility, the water that's supplied is either groundwater or water from the LA aqueduct that was filtered to the filtration plant. So that water's coming from North Hollywood. Basically, what we did is the storage that we had at Silver Lake Reservoir, Silver Lake and Ivanhoe, we took those reservoirs out of service and we replaced them with 110 million gallons of storage at Headworks. There are two underground reservoirs that total 110 million gallons. The source of water is the same that Silver Lake and Ivanhoe before.
The water we already have been counted in the systems.
Correct.
We're just storing it somewhere different.
Correct, exactly. We just moved the storage further up and took the reservoirs out of service.
We ran out of black plastic balls to put in Ivanhoe.
I don't think people would have been too happy with the plastic balls at Silver Lake and Ivanhoe. It was discussed.
I bet, yeah. Thank you, thanks, Selmo.
I have a few questions on this slide. So one, I'm looking for a little more detail on in the green, what percentage of that 48 or 70 is contributed by each of the amounts that we use to count up to the Green New Deal equation? Be it, sort of, I know on the blue side, we're dealing with sort of, you know, imported water on the green side, you know, groundwater, stormwater capture, water reuse, beneficial use, all those sorts of things. Do you have any more detail on that you can share with us?
Yes, and the green also includes the historic and planned conservation, yes. So for example, on the right side with our projections for 2030, we are projecting the imported at 30 and for local, the 70. So we are looking at groundwater being about 13% of that 70% recycled water, which includes the non-potable reuse as well as the indirect potable reuse at about 5%. And stormwater capture capacity, about 14%. Conservation, historic and planned, to account for 25%. And other beneficial reuses, 13%. Conservation, historic and planned, to account for 25%, and other beneficial reuses, 13%.
And, sorry, I want to just get that down. And can we talk a little bit about beneficial uses? So I know we don't have a slide on beneficial uses here. I want to understand what constitutes a beneficial use, who came up with that definition, how we track them.
Yes, so for the Green New Deal, the definition specifically was all recycled water produced by the city, even if it's used outside the city. And so for the recycled water component, what we did in the water system is we broke that out to specific uses, like non-potable reuse, recycled water reuse such as IPR or DPR, as well as uses for the environment. And so we do believe that environmental uses do count towards beneficial reuse, so that would be water for the Japanese gardens, water that eventually makes it down to the L.A. River. So that is calculated as part of that as well, and also water that is used by other cities but produced, recycled water that's produced within the city of L.A.
Those recycled, those gallons of recycled water that are earmarked for beneficial use, placed in the Japanese gardens, sent out to the L.A. River, et cetera, those are not double counted in the water recycling goal. Those are separate gallons?
That is, well, for the 70% local, that is all-inclusive in the 70% itself. And one thing I did forget to mention is implant uses, so uses within the water treatment facility itself is also included in that calculation.
Yeah, that's a lot of water for Tillman and for others, for Hyperion and for others. But I'm sorry, it's probably my fault, but I didn't follow the answer to the question, which is like, you know, part of the calculation is recycled water, part of the calculation is beneficial uses. Is there double counting that goes on between those two buckets, or are they separate, completely separate buckets?
So recycled water itself, you can consider that as the overarching number, and within the recycled water, it's categorized as non-potable reuse, beneficial, other beneficial uses, and IPR DPR. So it's all under the umbrella of recycled water.
Okay. So in, so for instance, at the bottom of this, where the asterisk is, and you talk about local supplies include water reuse and other beneficial uses, those are two separate things that are under the umbrella of recycling, but they're being counted separately?
Well, we did separate that other beneficial reuse outside of that water reuse, at least in this definition that we have listed right here. But when you look at the Green New Deal and how you are calculating it, it is not double counting, it is additive.
Okay, awesome, thank you. I think I got that.
Okay, on to the next one, which is different definitions of what is considered a local supply will cause the supply mix to change. So for this particular slide, we are looking at water supply to customers. And using this definition, we're projected to increase our percentage of water supplied from local sources by about four times. But keep in mind, what you see here does not capture any of the investments made in stormwater capture, water provided for beneficial uses, and conservation. The supply, the specific supply mix of water to our customers in any given year is also highly dependent on operational constraints and hydrology, which can also greatly impact the availability of both imported and local supplies. And I do want to note that hydrology is just one of the many factors that contribute to uncertainty as we try to project our water supply reliability out into the future. And to help illustrate that, here is a diagram of a cone of uncertainty. We're here on the left, the dot that says the present, looking out into the future, of which there are several plausible features that could occur, depicted here as features A through E. Each of these features could require different adaptation strategies, so it's critical that we're able to identify trigger points that could lead us down one particular path versus another and respond accordingly.
The cones are dead, and my dog has had to wear that before.
Yes. It is something that is quite uncomfortable, but climate change continues to really drive this uncertainty, and predicting the future has never been an easy job. And we've experienced several extreme events in just the last five years since the Green New Deal was published that has really changed the way we see things and the way we are planning for our future. So just as an example, just in the past five years, we've experienced the COVID pandemic, housing affordability issues, inflation, a sharp and sudden decline in our population, and the driest consecutive three years in California's history, followed by one of the wettest years on record. We've seen really dramatic shifts in our water supply and also in the demands within the city. So when we look out into the future, we recognize that we have to consider these uncertain factors that have a major influence on shaping the cone of uncertainty for water supply reliability, whether that means something like continued decline in our water use within the city, and how that impacts how we balance our water supply portfolio, or intensifying hydrologic extremes that may push us towards a future in which investments in storage become critical, or something in between that requires us to leverage our diverse water supply portfolio to best serve our customers. While we're happy to report on our excellent progress to date towards achieving our near-term Green New Deal goals and targets, we'll continue to track our progress moving forward and ensure that we're taking the necessary steps to adapt and meet our targets. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any additional questions you may have.
You know, I got a little bit more for you. Could you go back one slide for me? And thank you for an excellent presentation. Okay, so I obviously asked for this presentation, my thinking behind this was as a new board member when I came in a year ago, and you were so patient with me, was really to understand the difference between the Green New Deal calculation and, I think, public perception of the Green New Deal calculation, which is just that it's wet water. I mean, I think most of our customers, when they hear 70% local water, they think, oh, the water coming out of my tap is going to come 70% of it from somewhere in the Los Angeles basin. I, you know, you've been very patient with me, you and David and others, and sort of taking me through the difference in those calculations, but I do think that I am now aware of this difference, all of us here are now aware of this difference, the public is still not aware of that difference. And so we're going to be really fighting an uphill battle in terms of justifying, as you've mentioned, the sort of tremendous progress we made along some of these goals as satisfying sort of the promise we've made to the public about our imported versus local water source progress. So I really appreciate this as sort of a point-in-time snapshot of the progress we're making. I do want to have a larger discussion, you know, as a board, with our leaders on the water system and with our general manager about, you know, how to, I mean, we're on track to exceed, if not necessarily right, inside the same timeline, we're on track to exceed many of these goals. Like, how can we push the department and ourselves and the city further toward, you know, more local water supply, more sustainability, acknowledging the work that we've done and how successfully we've done it, learning from it, to sort of double down in areas that really make sense? You know, we're all aware that when Pure Water L.A. comes online, for instance, it creates a massive capacity for us in our local water supply that isn't accounted for here. So there is like a real potential for us to push beyond this goal, no matter its definition, and I'm really, I'm really excited for that and excited to work on that together. I do think that the last kind of question I have in that process is, are the ways we're tracking our 70% goal going forward and how, if and how, we are harmonizing that work with our urban water management plan that's due for a sort of update here shortly? My sense is that the department has been really focused on our urban water management plan and on reporting out our actuals, as you mentioned, in sort of the briefing book that we produce from time to time. But it doesn't seem to me that we have had at least a very publicly available strategic process for understanding our progress against 70%, how much more there is to get there, in a way that anyone can sort of clearly understand, digest, access on our website, something like that. I think we've been much more focused as a department on our L.A. 100 goals on the water side, and we haven't had that, that level of focus or public scrutiny on the water side. And so I'd really like, I'd really like, and I wish Janice was here, but I'm sure someone will tell her, that I'd really like for us to, to have a sort of management report on that sort of, with, with the data and the thinking that underlines the presentation that we saw today, so that we can really understand in more detail what these numbers really mean and where our progress is and where we have yet to go, maybe a series of briefings like the one that Richard's asked for on, you know, for instance, stormwater capture in that gray area where we have left to go, what, as Janice mentioned, is sort of in the heat map of this is probably going to happen, this is maybe going to happen, this is yet to be determined. And then in that process or through digesting that information, to really understand how we start more actively, more proactively communicating to the public what our progress against this goal is on a more regular basis, because I think that, you know, we've done the work as the city family to enroll the public, Angelino's, our ratepayers, into this massive goal, but then we've really been using the urban water management plan as the thing we communicate to the public about. And that disconnect, I think, has people a little confused, like what, what really is our goal? Some of the goals in the urban water management plan, for instance, are more aggressive than the goals in our Green New Deal. So sort of truing up those two and helping people understand the difference, I think, would be super helpful. And if you have any ideas or color to add now, you're welcome to, and if not, we'll get to work on that after the meeting.
Thank you for that suggestion. That's certainly something that we can work on and discuss with you on how best we can connect those dots. And even with the urban water management plan, that does take all the different master plans that are created, and we do use that as our strategic plan moving forward. But to your point, these Green New Deal goals, and like I showed earlier in the presentation, there are different definitions. So even the urban water management plan definition is different from the Green New Deal, so there is a benefit to at least share that difference with the public, so people understand what we're talking about when we speak about a goal to reach 70% local based on the Green New Deal.
Thanks for all this. It was very complicated, but I think helpful.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, much appreciated.
Can I just say thank you for, we have a lot of staff, a lot of capable and smart staff. I specifically recognize Sabrina's leadership in bringing all these things together. She's been extremely highly effective, professional, on top of the issues, and her leadership is making a huge difference.
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there are some representatives of a couple of environmental groups that, rather than speaking in pieces earlier, I agreed to ask them to come up afterwards as a group, and on the condition that Gold didn't speak for very long, but everybody else is.
I have to go really quick at the beginning or I'm cutting his time. Want us here or there?
Take a seat, that's fine. Take a seat.
Ooh, a seat for you. This is a blessing, not you.
Excellent. Let's see, okay, yes, that's working. Good morning. My name is Bruce Resnick, Executive Director of L.A. Waterkeeper. We've got Annalisa Mo from Heal the Bay, Mark Old from NRDC, and thank you for both having this hearing today, a few times postponed, but it's great to be here. And in putting this presentation together, we were responding to what the PowerPoint was, which didn't have some of the detail we've talked about. So some of our slides, you guys have already asked questions, we've had details, so we'll, we'll try to tweak things a little bit on the fly today. But I'm going to just start with the benefits of a one-water approach. And, you know, it's nice to be up here because I feel like I don't have to go over this much, because I'm preaching to the choir both at the board level and, and staff level. So that's really, really exciting, but obviously...
Is that because of your presentation?
Yeah.
Thanks, I mean. Or time for me.
Not yet, I want to talk about the building later. Got thoughts? But, but obviously, there's a lot of benefits to local water just beyond, you know, just having local water. There's the biodiversity benefits, which meets with Gold, there's the carbon footprint, and really just ultimately, it's about local water security. We know how bad things got, almost catastrophic, just a couple of years ago, and we know what's happening with extreme weather and extreme drought and the collapse of many of the places where we get our water. And so it's just absolutely essential that L.A. DWP and the city of L.A. gets this right. The overall impressions of the plan, first of all, again, I appreciate having this update. I think it is long overdue and very exciting. And really, congrats, L.A. DWP. We recognize that you guys are doing a lot of tremendous, tremendous work in promoting local water, and that needs to be applauded for what is happening and for the goals that are, that are laid out. Also, thank you for taking one of our suggestions early on in the drafts of showing kind of how much change matters if you're, if you're gonna, you know, show different types of definitions of water. I know it's going to be covered more later, but ultimately, we do think the wet water idea is most common sense and most understandable to folks, but using the 2014 baseline of when the plan was initially adopted. So it would end up looking in between, I think, the two different charts that you said. Pure Water L.A. is conspicuous in its absence not being on here, and what I know as kind of a more of an insider, how much you guys are working on it, I do think it sends a bad message when it's not included, not included in reaching the 70%, just the optics. Assuming you use a more middle-of-the-road, there's still a long way to get toward that 70%. And with that, and this has been touched on already, we really do need a strategic plan to get there that is clear, and I appreciate the comments you made earlier on, some of giving away too much that could lead to speculation, but we really do need to have a better understanding both at the public and the board level. And then my last slide is just about stormwater capacity. So we, we appreciate the idea of doubling, it would be great to understand where the gray area is, but we think we, you actually can go even bigger than that and may need to. Safe Clean Water Program has a goal of 300,000 acre feet of additional new capacity by 2045. I think a lot of that's going to have to be in the San Fernando Valley Basin. As has been said, we're going to need to think both big in terms of some of the big projects, the gravel pits, one of the things, but also don't forget the combination of a lot of smaller, mid-sized projects, parks, green schools are obviously critical and something we could need help with, thinking beyond just the San Fernando Valley. And in all these areas, we really want to be partners. I think a lot of times people look at the environmental, maybe we don't want to see bigger projects. We need to do everything we can for local water, small, big, medium, and we need, we want to be a partner, and we also need your help on things like greening schools. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Annalisa.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Annalisa Mo, and I'm the Associate Director of Science and Policy at Heal the Bay. Climate resiliency plays a big role in Heal the Bay's mission, and locally sourced water is an increasing, incredibly important strategy to build resiliency in L.A. So very quickly, first here, just looking for clarity on what the goal is for groundwater remediation, if that is still 110,000 acre feet per year yield, given increase in augmentation. For groundwater replenishment, specifically looking at wastewater recycling, it would be great to get written confirmation of the updated numbers that were presented today, but also it is hard to imagine a discussion of local water in L.A. without including Pure Water L.A., especially given the city's commitment to recycle 100% of wastewater from Hyperion, which is, in the Green New Deal, is its own specific goal. We do need to know exactly where Pure Water L.A. fits into groundwater replenishment plans with an ultimate goal of 200,000 acre feet per year of new water. And a quick note that we do need to start messaging Pure Water L.A. with that branding as soon as possible, so we can all work on that ambitious and achievable goal together. We're looking forward to seeing the master plan later this year. When we talk about conservation, this is a key to sustainable water future in L.A., and it does need to be considered as valuable as new water supply. We have to aim not only for the minimum required, but what is truly achievable. So this should be 88 gallons per capita per day in all, so that's including residential, indoor, outdoor, but also the commercial, industrial, and institutional, having this goal by 2035 to make L.A. a true leader in conservation. By focusing also on the outdoor water use and landscape transformation, an additional 15% reduction by 2035 is absolutely achievable, while simultaneously achieving the goals that Bruce mentioned earlier for biodiversity and overall ecosystem health. And then I'll, and here that we have to discuss the definition of, of local water, the difference in values is pretty massive, given the variable underlying assumptions and definitions. So we need a clear outline of the totals now and projected for 2030 to fully understand the breakdown, the viability of 70% local water by 2035, and also the viability of going beyond that 70%. Now I'll pass it to Mark.
Great, thanks. Did you change me already or no?
Yes.
Okay. So a couple of things, just for point of background, I think everybody knows me, but I'm also... I'm also now on the Met Board, I'm on the Regional Oversight Committee for Measure W, and I led a research effort on what would it take to get LA to be 100% local water by 2050 as part of UCLA's Grand Challenge Program in a four-year period about a decade ago. So this is definitely an area that I have a lot of interest in, and I think Bruce and Annalisa did a really good job of framing some of the things. And looking at the math here, which I know is problematic for some, is that we're looking at amazing conservation benefits that you've had, 130,000 acre-feet per year roughly is the ballpark from 2014. And so if you, so we're not, this whole 10% versus 50% or whatever is silly. Like, from the environmental community's perspective, we feel you're sort of at 30% right now in local water, just so you know, using that for background. And we sort of think your projections by 2030 get you around 50%. Don't get, so it's not like we're way apart here, but clearly, as has already been stated, the biggest issue is just sort of ignoring Hyperion like it doesn't exist. And so that's really one of the biggest elements here that we want to talk about. On the stormwater side, we understand that part gets a little bit complicated. One of the things that was brought up, I think, by Commissioner McGraw, is that even there, you're using a target that's smaller than you have in your urban water management plan, which is from, you know, 2015, 2019 was the coverage there. And on stormwater, you had 178,000 acre-feet per year as your environmental target as opposed to 150. We're better than that. We've had Measure W pass by then, you know, we have the 300,000 target that was talked about already. And so we know we can do a lot better than that, and, you know, the, what you approved last meeting you had on the stormwater projects and infiltration shows you're really moving in that direction. And so that really is an approach that I think you've already had. Groundwater, we're so glad to see the NoHo project finally happen. My God, you know, obviously, that has been a super fun issue for 40 years, and to see you go the pump-and-treat route, you know, we're just, you know, ecstatic that's happening from the standpoint of much better groundwater management and realizing that makes a lot more sense for everybody. On stormwater, you know, low-impact development, you're not even giving yourself credit for your own stormwater infiltration program from, because it's a policy. It's not that you didn't do a bunch of projects, but basically, 1% of the city of LA now is under the lid ordinance, and it's infiltrating runoff, and it's providing, it's reducing potable water demand. You guys haven't even analyzed that. And so there's a lot of stuff that's sort of missing from the standpoint of how you're looking at this, and that can hopefully improve over time as well.
Before you go too far, let me comment on, you were here when you were hearing all the good things that we are doing and how prepared we are on many things. If anything, we sometime get criticized for thinking, thinking too big because it ends up costing our ratepayers money. But certainly, I want you to understand, we are staying on this.
And I think I've supported many ratepayer increases over the years, including the sewer service charge. We're talking with the city right now all the time, so.
But we're really in step here together.
Yep, understood, and I appreciate that, Commissioner. And so on the uncertainty side, you know, that's all up here. You know, I think the thinking big is really what the big issue is here, and the water reuse is really transformational. Really, this whole thing of moving to local water supply is transformational for LA. And, you know, Bruce put that well on the climate resilience benefits and the like. The water reuse calculations and what counts and what doesn't count, I think we're going to need to discuss that more. The environmental benefits of just, are you discharging into the LA River, which is 27 million gallons a day, as if, as if that's the same, 27,000 acre-feet per year. That's not the same, you know, year-round, right? You know, so if you're discharging during a storm versus you're discharging during the summer, and those discussions are going to be had over time, and, you know, at the State Water Board and the Regional Water Board, we all know that. But from the standpoint of really moving forward to the conclusion here, and what's important is, is that we need that implementation plan on how are we actually going to get there. And it's not just an issue for DWP, it's an issue for the city of Los Angeles. We have literally been talking to the mayor's office from day one of her becoming mayor, saying, we need an implementation plan on how we're going to get to 70% by 2035 and get everybody on board and everyone working together on that. And I think what you're hearing today is that we in the environmental community not only are here to help, but, I mean, we're willing to roll up our sleeves and really help because we have a great deal of expertise in this arena, and this is something that I think we should all be doing together. And I think with all the things, the expertise that we all have, all the places that we're all connected, that this is something that we all could really achieve. But doing this sort of in a haphazard way of, you know, here's a stormwater master plan, here's a water recycling plan, you know, let's bring this all together under the umbrella of 70% by 2035. And really, I'd say with no less, it should be at least within a year that we have a final implementation plan on how to do that. We know you want to finish your master plan, and that'll be a critical element to building on that. And so that's why I'm saying within a year probably makes sense to do that, and we think it's absolutely critical, and 70% by 2035 can be achieved if we all get on the same page of how to get there and not quibble over, you know, how do you define this or that? The reality is, we know a lot of stuff needs, we can do better. We all know we can do better, and the things that we're all talking about are things that we've all talked about for years and years here. So thanks for the opportunity to take a little bit more time, and glad to answer any additional questions you may have.
Questions or, we questioned out at this point. I think, you know, I appreciate the presentation, I appreciate that, you know, that your role is to push us, and we need to be pushed from time to time. And we may complain about it a little bit, but we still, you know, but it's important to make sure we're doing as much as we can, and I think that we appreciate the input. And we appreciate the fact that, you know, all of your stuff is science-based as opposed to people who just throw rocks at us because we get that too. But appreciate your commitment as well, so, you know, thank you.
We really are. Like, it's, we'll push you, but we'll also, we'll be there to support all of us.
We throw way too many numbers at you.
I do want to, I do appreciate having you all here in the room, and these presentations have been fantastic. We don't have to go deep into it, but when it comes to the LA River, we do have to talk about the Army Corps.
Yeah.
At some point.
Supplanta Basin, Army Corps discussions, as well as the LA, I mean, think about Supplanta Basin as part of that watershed infrastructure.
Cutting down all the vegetation. Okay, so let's talk more about that because it's happening, and nobody's aware, except if you go down there and you watch them do it.
I disagree. I think people are aware, and they're not doing anything about it. That's a very different thing. I can show you news articles from 20 years ago where that has occurred, and there was all sorts of people being upset by it. Yeah.
Okay.
So basically, the Army Corps doesn't change much.
No. But like repurposing Supplanta Basin is going to take everybody working together to get Congress to put in a change so that you can actually utilize it for, you know, for your water supply. And right now, we can't.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Anything else, guys? Thank you. No, I appreciate, thank you, thank you for your patience, and.
I'm glad we're still all going to be alive when that, 2035.
Glad you're not pressing it for me. No kidding, all right.
Don't tempt me.
Yes, exactly. Good, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, let's move it on with the agenda because we also have, we have a long closed session coming up. Someone remind me where I am on the agenda.
Item I.
Item I, okay. Item I is.
Reports by Commissioners on Committee Activity.
Anything by Commissioners?
None from me.
Then we'll just kind of say ours together. It was now, what is it, almost two, oh, two weeks ago that we went with Councilman Curran Price at his Council District Nine event. He wanted various people out there. This was a piece of land that DWP used to store pipes or something on, and we gave it or loaned it or leased it to Wreckin Park. They then took it and made it into a nature park, and it really was lovely to see. We probably, that park probably was the prettiest thing in this particular area because I could see places that did recycling that unrelated to us privately in the neighborhood. But the prettiest thing was this park, now Council District Nine, big project, and it all started with DWP freeing up that land, giving it to our quote, "partner" department. So I'm very pleased, and I know the neighborhood benefits firsthand, when we do look for these pocket areas that are ugly, that we have storing something on, if we can free it up, it really does a world of good. And it was really nice to be out there. It was on a Saturday, so it wasn't a regular day for us. It was very hot, but there were many other departments out there as well. We could say what we wanted to say, but it had been a long day like this, so I said less than I might have. And I know our Commissioner was there from the very beginning, and the moment she walked up, so many people knew her because of her work as a architect and particularly one that does all these naturalist things. So the moment she showed up, people just came around her like a bee to a honey. So it was very, I was happy to be there as part of this tag team.
Thanks. It's Augustus Hawkins Park, and just to clarify, it was actually, the land and the development was done by the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, but they didn't get any credit for whatever reason. It was interesting.
And let's just stay with what we know.
Yeah, no, but what was most satisfying is, it's about a 15-year-old project, and the trees were just, and, you know, this is an industrial area and an area, but with, you know, a residential area too, in need of park, and the oaks were like majestic, and the sycamores were majestic. It was just beautiful for some of you who were there, and it's actually going to be connected and is connected to a number of other public projects that have been developed. So it was wonderful to be there, really wonderful. And yesterday, I went to the opening of an all-girls school representing the department. Gala, was it?
Gala, Girls Academy, Los Angeles.
Yes, it was fantastic to see so many young women and so much wonderful leadership there, and really, you know, sort of a wonderful campus that has been, you know, refreshed, and it was beautiful. It was a beautiful experience, and, you know, it's right next to St. Mary's College, and there's a lot of cross-fertilization between the two. So it was great to be there. The Leadership Academy, any of you who have children or grandchildren or others, it's a wonderful, wonderful women's pro, all-girls school.
Very cool.
And I don't know how we were involved, except that I was there.
Good. And we appreciate your being there. Thank you for representing. There's also in Curran's District, Curran Price's district, there's another park that was a Heal the Bay project that only took 10 years, not the 15 years, but it'll be dedicated within the next month, and it's Stormwater Capture Program. Because, I mean, that part of the city defines concrete jungle.
Yes.
And really needs these pocket parks and these small amounts, I mean, as much green as we can put in there. So that's a Prop W project, so.
Great.
Any, but thank you for attending on all of our behalf.
Yes, no, yes.
All right, so we're on item I. Yeah, Commissioner Activity, J. We already adopted everything on J, correct?
Ordered, filed.
Okay.
All items in J are ordered, filed.
Thank you. So the minutes from the last meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion, then the seconds. Without objection. All members present as I vote, that'll be adopted. Filed minutes. Motion for future consideration?
None.
None. Neighborhood council rep?
No community impact statements were filed.
In that case, it's time for Ben to do his thing.
Orders to publicly report any action taken in closed session and the vote or extension of every member present thereon in accordance with Section 54957.1 of the California Government Code.
We will now go into closed session, and that's going to take a while. Thank you.